All right, good evening, Michigan City, Indiana. Thank you all for joining us at another exciting meeting of the Michigan City Redeval Commission. This is a special meeting that we call because we're trying to effect a smooth transition to the new administration and tie up as many loose ends as are appropriate. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Debbie, if you would let the minutes show that all commissioners here are here, with the exception of Mayor Muir and Teresa Edwards, our Michigan City Area Schools representative, and Mr. York is sitting in for Mr. Phillips this evening. So with that, I've got to turn it over to Alan for a minute to get this right tonight. Now, we had an executive session prior to this.
Executive session was held. No items were discussed or not permitted by the open door law, and no decisions were taken.
Thank you. And the first up is Mr. York, facade program request for funding Second Street Wake Robin property.
Good evening, board. I'm just going to sit right here if that's okay with everyone. I'm going to pass around some photos of the building that were submitted last time Mr. Radke was here and give you guys kind of an overview of what he is seeking to do, basically just to beautify or give it a facelift, if you will. Correct me if I'm saying something wrong. Give it a facelift, make it look better. You can see from the pictures that it's a kind of a mixture of block and brick, and I think having a facade on it will unify one look across it and maybe get it some new garage doors, things of that nature. So I'll read you my, he's got some drawings, thank you.
Just one, but we've been through a lot of different color schemes, and this is the one that's listened to the top. So that's, I didn't want to bring everything in. Tuck pointing and a good paint job, and then built in these copper awnings over the windows, I think will give it the street appeal that we're trying to achieve and put us in the 21st century.
The sex appeal you mentioned last time.
I'm sorry. The sex appeal, yeah.
I did have a chance to review all the submitted material that Mr. Radke put together. He submitted a budget in the amount of $56,400. It looks like the majority of the cost is masonry on that, so I'm sure it's going to have to, it probably needs some tuck pointing.
Some blocks need to be replaced.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a significant cost. He did have his estimates that he got for us, his deeds. So all the information's here and put together in a nice packet. So I'm going to read you my request. Today's date is December 18th to the redevelopment commission from Skyler York's Assistant City Plan regarding facade improvement request for 425 East Second Street. The company's Wake Robin Inc. project description, the new, well, he's not the new owner, he said that the owner of this building is proposing to remodel the exterior of the building. The building is an older storage garage, storage slash garage building likely associated with the previous industrial use. The building is not located in a historic district, in a local historic district, and therefore does not require to receive a certificate of appropriateness for the facade grant and renovation, which is a little bit different. Most of ours are in historic districts, this is not. The new facade will greatly clean up the area and is likely to attract a new user for the building. The total project cost is $56,400. The owner will be paying 20, will be required to pay $26,400. This will be the max amount, so $30,000 is our max amount. That's 60% of the project. Actually, it's a little bit less than 60. Anyways, that's 60% of the project, it maxes the amount out. So it's $30,000, and it's, this will max out the building, the whole amount available for that building. I want to be clear about that, too. You won't be able to come back. So anyways.
So any questions for Skyler? So I have one, whether it's Skyler, or whether it's Dan, or Anna, or Justin, I'm not sure exactly who. So one of the things that I'm certain that we wanted to have with our facade and upper story apartment complex investments to try to help spur new investment in the city was to have an end use in mind, and within some reasonable timeframe. Do you have any, what, after the improvements, and if you could come up to the microphone, identify yourself, too, would be helpful.
Where's your microphone?
It's a little short one here, so you don't have to sit down.
Dan Radke, can you hear me?
Yeah, Dan Radke and address.
Dan Radke, 508 East Second Street, Wake Robin Incorporated. The building is not vacant now. We use it quite a bit. We have a big sailboat that's being rehabbed in there, in one end of it. We've got a carpenter shop in there, and we've got many, many boats and motor homes that are being stored in there for the winter. So it's not a vacant building right now. But at Craig Phillips' suggestion, what he put planted in my head, and what I think the ultimate use of the building is going to be done is divide it up in what he called maker spaces.
Okay.
You familiar with that? Okay.
So that's. Where individual entities come in and actually build products or start businesses?
Yeah, yeah. We partitioned it off, probably add some bathrooms, and partitioned it off, and then rent it out to artists or artisans.
And the timeframe for some of that, is that this year, or what do you think?
We'll get a nice sign up, and we could start immediately. We need to start marketing it.
Well, that's what I'm just trying to get a feel for, about this, you know, future use kind of thing.
Yeah, no, it's not future, it's present.
Okay, great. But that's my question, I don't know if anybody else has a question.
Is there plenty of parking down there, too?
Well, yeah, it's, the building has got a lot of land around it, and it's gravelled, so it doesn't really look like a professional parking lot, but there's plenty of places to park.
Okay.
Plus, street parking, there's a lot of street parking, too.
Okay. All right, if there are any other questions, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Motion to approve, second.
If we can second it, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing a "aye"? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
You guys are awesome. Thank you very much.
Looks like we're going to have copper awnings on this newly painted.
Not real copper, copper color.
Copper color. So I just want, I just want to make comment that whoever did the crayon on there kept it all within the lines, very nice.
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, all right. So on to another exciting project, item number four, the former memorial site project. And I've got Alan here, but maybe, do you want to start off, Alan? Then maybe we could ask Mr. Smith to come forward a little bit on it, or?
When we were at our regular meeting, we talked about this idea of a apartment complex, mixed-use building of retail on the first floor and a 122, 122?
128.
128 unit building that I think at this point, well, at that point, we were in kind of, well, more than preliminary stage, but we certainly have, we've had a lot of extensive conversation, a lot of extensive discussions. Where we were at that point, we had put together a brief or a conceptual non-binding term sheet, which the developer has signed, developer being Michigan City Development LLC, and basically where we were with the commission was last time, they wanted to look at that more generally. But I think in terms of where we are on the program at this point, is that both sides are in agreement to the conception of the idea. Both sides are in agreement as to the commitments on both parts. Where we are is that their developer guru and myself and our attorney or consultant with Walts, Walts, Hunters, and Hayes screwed the whole damn thing up. So only from the viewpoint of just using more technical language than, that I think seems to be a foreign concept on both, or at least some questions that were raised on both sides. So where we are, and I think where, given where we are, you know, if we were sitting here in August, we probably wouldn't even be talking about this right now. We'd be just saying, okay, well, we're in agreement, we know what we're doing, we just need to all put it, putting it all together and put the actual project agreement, all subsequent documents together. However, given the reality of the situation is, we're sitting here on December 18th, we have a new administration coming in, we're going to have a new Board of Commission likely. And so rather than try to push all of this through within a short period of time, I think we're back to where the term sheet was. I think the developer feels comfortable with that, I think the new administration would feel comfortable with that, that we're locked into non-binding, and not to put together any kind of agreement, but we're both locked into getting together, putting the actual language together for a project agreement and other documents to the point of we're committed to making this thing a reality. There's, again, this is not something that can be done overnight, which was, which was what we tried to do this week, and it failed. So I think with that, I guess we're back to the point of, I think Tim and I would suggest that if we could both agree, both parties can agree to a non-binding term sheet that was circulated before the last meeting, the redevelopment commission executes it, and that's just simply, I really believe from past experience that we've done with these kind of projects, is the situation of where the new commission, Don, whether you're with or without you, or whether you're on the commission or not, but certainly your input has been vital on this, and so we're going to want Ruth Warhammer as our consultant, with Dan Adam Cottons and myself, and Tim, and Nathan, and I think anybody else that you see as relevant on your side, but certainly Ken and anybody else from the new commission, so we don't get to the point of violating open door law. But the point being is that I think sometime within the next, within a relatively short timeframe, like 30 days is even too long, but I think within a couple of weeks, whether we can have it ready in place, depending upon the particulars involved, and with the holidays, whether we can have it in place by the first meeting in January, or we need a special meeting sometime in January that may be more realistic. But the point is sometime in January, we have a project agreement and other documents identified with specific deadlines, with identified guarantees, guarantors as to funding, and a better understanding. Just as a classic example, without going into too much detail, but you know, we've had two issues, two major issues on both sides. And then from Tim's viewpoint, he says, Alan, we can't do this. And I said, oh, Tim, you're worried about nothing. And then from my viewpoint, I'm saying, Tim, that doesn't make sense to me. He goes, Alan, you're worried about nothing. So that's the kind of discussion I think we need to have. From Tim's perspective on the issues that I have, it's nothing. From my perspective, and what Tim's concerned about is nothing. So we can get those things ironed out. But from a project viewpoint, they are significant issues, and it's very important, particularly given the partnership that we're going to have here, and that's exactly what it is, it is a public-private partnership, we need to be on the same page on that. And I think both sides are committed to that, and that clearly is reflective in the non-binding term sheet. So I would ask that you, unless you have specific questions on the term sheet, that you enter into that, that we execute that tonight, Don gets authorization to execute that, and then Tim and I will get together and with the necessary principles, and we'll put something together.
And so the activity just relative to that, too, would be to try to flesh out it best we can, in terms of both sides agree to, for the new redevelopment commission to vote on it, hopefully at their first meeting in January, and hopefully we'll have enough communication amongst all of us to get to a agreement where we're both comfortable and can move ahead with this great project. So, Tim, you want to add anything to that at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I just.
Yeah, please, just come up and tell us a little bit about MCD, and if you will, your commitment to the project.
Well, hey, I appreciate the commission and, you know, looking forward to working with the new commission, the incoming commission in January. But I think Alan is appropriately positioned where we are with this. I think that, you know, these issues are not unsurmountable, it's just trying to push too much in. And then also, we want to give the new administration, you know, an opportunity to take a look at the agreement, too, because they're going to have to live with it. So, you know, I don't think any of the issues are insurmountable. I think we just, you know, we just need to work them out. But the project is, it's a luxury apartment, it's 128 apartments. We have retail on the bottom, and we already have interest in the retail, and then we have a restaurant at the top, which we already have interest in the restaurant as well. So I was telling the commission tonight that we already have three or four people that have inquired about putting deposits down on the apartment complex. So, you know, we're really excited, you know, our commitment is definitely here. I've been in the community for over 18 years and have worked with a number of members on the commission here, and so, and members that are in the new administration, so looking forward to that, and then also looking forward to, you know, building this great project for Michigan City.
You might speak a little bit to the architect?
So our architect is White and Company, but the number one architect on this project is Dirk Lohan. Dirk has been previously been involved in certain projects within Michigan City, and Dirk is, lives in, I believe, Michiana Shores, and so I know he has a place up here. And so Dirk has driven by the location many times, and so he's very invested in the project as well, and from his previous work. Some of our other, one of our investors previously worked on bringing money for the Blue Chip Casino when it first started here, so they have been in the community as well. And so, you know, we have invested members that have been in the community for a long time, and we want to stay here, and this isn't our only, our first, it's our first project, but it's not our last project, that we're looking at some other things. So like Ruth said, when we went through the process of presenting our project, you know, she's aware that we also are looking at other projects as well in the community.
So could you speak to your anticipated general contractor?
Our general contractor is Tony Blank. We think we have a great partnership between Tony Blank and White and Company to design the building, and, you know, I think we're going to be able to provide a very good product for the city of Michigan City.
Any other questions from the commission?
So, a couple misrepresentations. This project is going to be in the opportunity zone. The opportunity zone only has, if you have capital gains, you can invest into the project. At this point in time, we are doing debt financing and also having investment from our partners. There was some talk out there that we weren't going to pay the full taxes. We haven't asked for any tax abatements on this program at all, from federal or state, and I think that the value of what we're going to bring for tax revenue into the city of Michigan City is also going to help the city. So, you know, I just would like to clear that up, too, that there was no consideration or ask for tax abatement, so.
And also, the anticipated tax increment is anticipated to more than fully cover the city's investment already in property and in our million-dollar investment in supporting the parking activities on the project. So it's a good deal for the city, and that's not even counting the ancillary benefits of new people coming to the downtown, frequenting our restaurants, having a beautiful building with a skyline view out over Lake Michigan. So I think many, many, many positives. So I guess I'm done talking. Anybody else have any questions or comments? And I guess we're looking for a motion to accept the term sheet, is that it?
Yes.
I move to authorize to present the dispute dispute sheet.
Sir, I move and second it, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing a "aye"? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, commission members.
I'll get you that tomorrow. Perfect. We'll start setting the time for the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I guess the number five item is pretty much, this is a 12 East Second Street project. We're still, still working through the details of a project agreement with them. We, at this point, we haven't gotten far enough to actually present something that we're totally comfortable with, and so we're going to put this on the, on the working project list and continue to try to move forward in a similar way that we talked about with the, with the apartment complex project. So, anyone else have any other comments on the Second Street issue? All right, report by legal counsel.
The only thing I have in addition to what we've done before, we've talked about before, is the change order number nine from August Mack, which I handed out to you earlier today. This, I don't know if you've seen it, Don, but it's basically the final word that they had done to get to the point where we had the settlement with the Bank Corporation for the trail pre-清洁 and the environmental cleanup down on the tranche properties. This is an additional cost that both occurred during the course of the mediation, but then subsequent work since then, so we can better iron out exactly what needs to be done. Once we start having money in hand, we begin to undertake the actual cleanup. But that, this will be the last amount of money, or the last request for all of the pre-cleanup work, so.
Okay, so this is the amount of $2,094.77, is that correct, or an increase?
Yes.
Okay, and you might.
The change order associated with the final invoice that has already been submitted for that, but that's what the new increase, the change order is for that additional work for the $2,094.77.
And again, you might iterate why this money is well-spent, because of our remuneration.
We did receive a $1.8 million, we've actually entered and already executed, and it's been submitted to the court, the $1.8 million settlement for the environmental cleanup of the trail pre- properties. And the trial has been vacated, and the money is expected to be to the city within 60 days after execution, so probably within 50 days now, although knowing tax stuff, year-end stuff, we might get it by December 31st.
Okay, and the anticipation is, is that we'll cover the cost of the cleanup?
It'll cover the cost, not only the cleanup, but covers all the past costs, including, you know.
Including its $2,094.77.
But all the original contract that we have with August Mack in terms of the preparation for that, and the vapor intrusion that we had, and testing that we did, and all of that stuff. So, yeah, roughly half a million dollars is for prior costs.
Nice. So any questions from commissioners? What's the pleasure of the commission?
Motion to approve, second.
If we can second it, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing a "aye"? Aye. Opposed? All right. That's all I know. Well, that's all you have, because I have a question, so. You might give a little bit of update on station property relative to.
Station block.
Station block, just a little where we're at on that. This is, this is the block between Franklin Street and Pine and 11th and 10th relative to the new South Shore Station.
As we've talked about before, on the various issues that are involved in the double-track project and Michigan City's involvement with that, the step that we're at now is, well, the ultimate outcome is purchasing the properties within the station block, that lock, the properties, nine properties, I believe, from 11th Street to 10th Street, and on Pine Street to Franklin Street. And acquiring those 10 parcels, well, nine parcels, one of which already belongs to us, we don't have to worry about acquiring that. But basically, what comes in here are six parcels. We have to, because there's federal money involved with this through the, through NICD and through, well, through NICD and through the federal government, we have to comply with the Federal Relocation Act. The Federal Relocation Act has specific requirements, it's not just a simple thing of, well, we can go in there and do appraisal, like the state statute does. We do appraisals, and then we try to negotiate a price, and we ultimately agree on entering into a purchase agreement. The Federal Relocation Act requires that it be done by specialized appraisers, you can read into that more expensive appraisers. And because we know this area, for example, one of the parcels we know has, is an IDEM cleanup site, that then leads to overall discussion as to the presence, if any, of environmental issues to the adjoining parcels next to that particular site. So where that leads us to, and where we are at this point in time, is again, we've hired and commissioned with August Mack, and I think that was at an October meeting, a November meeting, to start doing the environmental assessments of the entire station block area. And then we also hired the firm at the recommendation of NICD, Beeman Long, is that NAF?
NAF.
BLN, who is actually the federal government-certified people to actually put together appraisals, and subsequently will result in a determination as to the purchase offer, and I think they will actually negotiate. But that's further on that. Where we are at this point is that, my usual roundabout way of getting to the answer to your question, is that we've done, August Mack has completed the appraisals, the environmental appraisals, phase one, I've read those summaries, those have already been done and handed off to BLN, and then some of the properties require phase twos, and I know those were done earlier this week, I've not read those yet, but those have also been handed off to BLN. So where we are at this point, the environmentals are done, and BLN now is in the process of actually putting together a proposals for value of the properties, and then getting to the point where we negotiated for acquisition.
So two points related, I'll just add from at least part of the discussion I heard, is there are several underground storage tanks.
Yes.
Involved in this, as well as the previous dry cleaning operations, and perhaps even some garage operations. So, you know, property acquisitions, particularly when you're involved with the federal government, is not necessarily an easy process, and it's a lot of work to get through, to be fair to not only the people that are going to be selling their property, but also to the community to make sure that we're spending money in the right way for the right stuff, and that we don't end up with surprises after we acquire the property. So it takes a lot of work, and it's not a simple process, and the target is to make sure that we get control of these properties by December of 2020 in order not to hold up the station block development relative to the application to the federal government. So, and I believe the anticipation from NICD is, is that by the, in the next couple of weeks, or certainly in maybe the January timeframe, will the project will actually get a favorable rating from the, is it FTA? From the FTA relative to be able to move ahead to final engineering design on the project. So I probably muddled my way through that, but I just wanted to make sure that we're routinely keeping people abreast of what's going on with the double track, so.
And that's what the next stage, the next stage for us is, is the appraisals. The next stage for NICD is having the engineer designs approved, the funding for that approved, and then we actually start moving in that direction. You mentioned the date of December 2020 of when we have to be done with what we have so that we have actual control over the property, because the anticipated date of construction of, well, goes well on the federal side, is actually starting January, or certainly early in 2021. So the double-track project, not a guarantee, but boy, it sure is looking more and more like a reality every day.
All right, so any questions or comments, we'll do that. All right, we'll move on to Mr. Director, Assistant Director, any comments?
No comments tonight.
All right, any comments for the public? Comments for the public? Comments for the public?
I've got one.
Sure.
I just want to thank you all for everything that you've done, and will continue to do for this city. You guys are awesome.
Well, thank you, thank you, Dan. So much appreciated, thanks for your continued investment also, and I, since this is likely my last meeting, I just want to give my thanks to none of the people in the audience that I see some very familiar faces here at a lot of meetings. So in these meetings, they, although we try to progress as quickly as possible, sometimes you do have to sweat the details on the communication, otherwise you get out in front of everybody, and nobody knows what's really going on. And I really do spend a lot of time trying to give the best representation of what we're trying to accomplish here, and why, and I certainly appreciate working very much with my fellow commissioners and the planning department staff, and our administrative support within, and our legal counsel by Mr. Sierney, because it's been, it's been a great ride, and many, many more positive things to come in this community, and I hope you all continue to believe in the future of this great place, because it's up to all of us to make it just wonderful for everybody to want to live here, raise a family here, and bring your friends, too. So, any other comments from other commissioners?
Well, Don, I'd like to say thank you. You've done a great job, and been a learning experience this first year for me beyond the commission, and you've just been a hell of a leader, and I thank you for all your time you put in, and I really appreciate it, and I think the community should, too, so.
Well, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I echo that.
I'm wonderful working with you. Thank you. So let me, let me offer this, congratulations to Underdesigners, I understand that's for the last night. We have at least two of our commissioners continuing on into 2020, and congratulations to John Sheets, and also Pat Kowalski, and thank you, just my thanks again to for your participation on the commission. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I really appreciate your input, so.
Joe, also you for your time.
Yes, of course, of course.
Thank you.
So this is carrying on in some respects from Mayor Oberle's administration, and that. So this, this is carrying on in some respects from Mayor Oberle's administration in that, you know, people thinks, it's like I was in Pittsburgh, I was talking to the mayor, 'cause we went on excursion with one region six months ago and he talks about how proud he is of their 40-year overnight success, so if you go away and come back, it may seem like, you know, unbelievable progress, but when you're in the trenches, it never comes fast enough and it carries over a number of administrations and I know, I know you were proud of your work as mayor and I really appreciate you continuing to help the team move forward on the commission, 'cause your input's been invaluable, so.
Thank you, yes, yes.
Any other comments or question? If not, the next meeting, it will be January 13th and if anything else, a motion to adjourn. All right, we'll adjourn, thank you.